And enjoy the company of a community garden. According to a recent article in the December issue of Sunrise Magazine, this is a quote. Do you know that digging, planting, tending to, or simply being in a garden is one of the best things you can do for your health? More than just a hobby, gardening is a whole body, whole mind practice that delivers benefits only after you put that trough or shovel away. You should substitute the day in the garden for an indoor workout. This is our why. Now for our beginning. Uh, first of all, I'm a, I have my old school, I have real pictures to show you our beginnings.
And I'll start with Edward. Then their numbers are even more.
I must tell you first of all, that when we started looking for a place to have our community garden, we were shown an area behind the, the mission. And I went there and looked around and I saw no, no water source, no lighting, lighting and no fencing. Chris, uh, talked to me, uh, or met me when I, uh, set an appointment with him to see where could we have this, this, uh, garden. He says, get in the truck. And I was a little nervous about that, but I did. And he took me up to the volleyball court, right behind the Hannah Springs School. And he said, this is where you need to be. And I actually started to cry when I saw it. It had water, it had a fence, it had even like lighting that we really don't need, but just to know it was there. It was, it was a miracle. And I just wanted to tell you how grateful I am that we found that place. I'm sorry, what am I getting at? Let's give a little emotion. Okay, back to the beginning. It all began in twenty twenty with the COVID pandemic in full force. When everything shut down, people were urged to stay indoors and away from others. We were urged to maintain six feet distances from one another. I believed that admonition wouldn't need to apply to a community garden. So I proceeded to find others to help get a community garden started. The League of Gardeners suggested I talk to Karen Disarn with the Texas State and the National Wildlife Extension for help since I had only been a resident here in Lampasses for a few years and had only a handful of acquaintances. Karen brought together friends from Master Gardeners and 4H and we assembled a board of directors. I applied to the state of Texas for a certificate of formation as a private nonprofit organization. That was filed July twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Later, we applied to the IRS for an I number and received it August fourth, twenty twenty. We applied to the IRS for our five oh one C three designation as a charitable nonprofit tax exemption. That was received November eighteenth, twenty twenty. I don't know if you realize how astounding these dates are. We were in a pandemic where nothing was working, especially government. Now, the hard part began. We needed to raise funds for our liability insurance before we could gain access to the gardens at all. But first, we needed an agreement with the city. I wrote three grants which garnered enough money along with other donations and fundraising efforts to raise the needed funds to be able to sign the agreement and get started. That was November eighteenth, twenty twenty. We had five gardeners set, signed up to do the square foot gardening method. Karen had a grant to help gardeners who were economically challenged. They were provided traditional gardening materials and planted with earth. It became apparent that the square foot gardening method was superior and we have recommended it to our gardeners ever since. Throughout twenty one and twenty two, we continued to grow. We started a compost pile to supplement the purchased compost. We constantly had volunteer, we continually had volunteer help from the gardeners and outside groups such as the youth from the Methodist Church who helped during spring break. And we had help from the juvenile probation office. They have provided some kids that have been so valuable over the years. And the Master Gardeners planted a pollinator garden in the back plot to herd their required service animals. As we were getting older gardeners, we noticed that it's harder for them to bend down to gardening in our regular raised beds. I mentioned to Kelvin, but our house.
We'll include Fairview, but the product, the whole project that we're looking at will look at BNC, Fairview and First and Landon as budget per venceables.
We had a gentleman talk to us, uh, council weeks ago about a period of either spring, summer and deep. Is that on your list?
That, uh, not necessarily because we're, I believe we're looking at that in terms, in terms of the C D E project and how we can adapt that. Uh, maybe not necessarily changeover, but as, as part of that project. So that's being addressed in a different manner.
But that's being looked at.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions?
You mentioned that, uh, we did have a, a, uh, brainage, uh, study that was done, that was adopted.
It, it was not necessarily a study, it's more of a criteria manual. Um, it basically gives developers something to go off of or.
March, March, where was that?
That was two thousand eleven, that it was, uh, supplied to the city. To my regular, to my knowledge, to the records, it was never adopted.
So maybe we can start.
Not necessarily start over. We'll just ask, uh, Mr. African to review, the psychologist to make sure everything's still up to muster. And if it is, then we'll just resupply the council to adopt.
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, discussion regarding scheduling a joint meeting with Kinder Water, Water Supply Corporation and the City Council.
Mayor, Council, this is just a requirement for the wholesale contract. It clearly states that, uh, City Council and Kinder Water Supply Corporation were directors, were, were directors, sorry, are to meet annually. Um, the last we met was March of twenty twenty four. It's time for that to happen again. So I'm here just to see if we can get some possible available dates from council that we can approach other with.
And you'll, you'll recall, we had one scheduled for this summer and we didn't delay that until your city manager came on board. And unfortunately, we were unable to schedule that. Um, so we're looking at that joint meeting date.
Can we do that through a workshop or do we need to schedule a whole nother meeting?
I, um, I think given the intricacies of the relationship with Kinder Water at this point, it should, it should not just be on a workshop. I think it needs to be a meeting.
Like a, like a Monday in between our meetings, like an additional one?
Yes, I mean, it doesn't have to be a Monday, but there's another day that works better for council, I guess.
And we're talking about like January, February, or we're talking.
I don't see how we'll get one scheduled this month.
Yeah.
So January, um, we, we would, uh, we would request probably forty five to sixty days, um, from now so that we can make sure our attorney is present for that meeting, giving some of the statements that have made in the newspaper recently, um, that staff is incredibly disappointed about. Um, we would like to make sure our legal representation is present for that meeting with Kinder Water.
And would we get agenda priors to meeting then?
Yes, uh, as best as we can. Uh, I'm not sure if I did anyway. I'm, I'm not sure what's.
I think you guys will see when our council is available and let us know. Uh, I'd like, I'd like to see it done as soon as possible. So that we're in sync with that yearly, annually, uh, requirement.
Off the top of your heads, are there any dates in January or February that work for you?
Well, I lost my phone and the way it appeared, so, uh, I don't have my calendar, but I would, I would think, uh, that first week of January would maybe happen, fifth or sixth.
First week of January would be five, six, seven, eight, nine. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Stock show, I think the stock show is the nine, the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, well, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so like earlier, we could be better.
It's the ninth and tenth for the stock show.
Ninth and tenth for the stock show.
And Thursday, they do some stuff Thursday.
Yes, it's Wednesday, it's Friday.
Let's shoot for the.
Sure, we'll make it work. Fifth, five thirty. Okay. Um, just take a moment to, um, remind council, um, again, very incredibly disappointed in the comments in the newspaper, um, about the moral issues involving our contract with Kinder Water. Um, that the contract has been through several rounds of litigation and it's been appealed multiple times. And each time appellate courts have upheld the city of Yippee-Limpassas' position in that contract. We believe that, um, yes, this, the contract is beneficial to the city of Lampasses. But again, the appellate courts have found it that way each time. And it's unfortunate that Kinder does not feel like that contract is beneficial to them at this time, but to their own words, it was at one point and it's just not anymore. So again, we're, we're quite disappointed, um, with Mr. Schroders' position in the newspaper.
Are we, are we, um, asking J C Brown to be here or is it somebody else?
Natasha Martin with Ray's Dory has represented us in that litigation, so we'll, we'll ask her to be present for that.
Would that be possible, being third or four prior to that meeting?
Sure, um, but we can, we can see what we can get scheduled. We, uh, staff did have a meeting on Thursday.
So if, so if that's the case, like, cause I really think that, because a lot of this council was, and I was on at the end of some of the lawsuits, and I really think it would be beneficial for this council, the council to be brought up to speed on all of the history. Why don't we need to do that? Why don't we need to do it publicly? Why don't we need to do it in a session with the H R? I don't know.
I, I think it's important to do that publicly so that our citizens do understand how we've gotten here.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree, because it's, it's, it was Nancy.
It, it, yes, it was. I've not been able to locate a good timeline in the city files as far as like something visual that I can put in front of you guys. There is a bit of a timeline in some of the litigation documents that can be provided. I'm gonna, you know, work with Ms. Martin to develop that further, um.
So, so with that being said, is there any way we could maybe workshop that at our next meeting, our first meeting in January? And then joint meeting after that, so that that way everybody kind of knows where we're at for the meeting and the meeting, or is that?
I think.
And has to be.
Our first meeting would be twelfth.
So, okay, we would only push it back, like if we could push it back, um, from the fifth to, what do we look? From the fifth to the nineteenth, which is Mark with the King, which would be like, I guess, the twentieth, like if we could push it from the fifth to the twentieth.
And there's nothing that says that our joint meeting with Kinder can't be on a weekday as council meeting. So if we wanted to have our informational meeting that first week in January, staff will have sufficient time to put that timeline together for you.
And then have a meeting with Kinder maybe on the twelfth?
Yes.
Like a, an informational workshop meeting on the fifth? I would rather do that if possible.
Yeah, I think that petition. Before.
And I, is, you, there are several former council members that have gone through the process that I'll certainly make sure that they're aware so they can, um, come discuss it with us as well. So if there's finer details than what we can see in black and white, then, um, I, I think it's very important to educate the council and the citizens as well what's on this today.
Yeah, I agree. So are we planning on doing that meeting, like a workshop type meeting on the fifth? And then inviting, having the joint meeting on the twelfth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next one up is discussion regarding the historical Lampasses color.
Mayor, Council, this was introduced to you, or, I don't know, I think in August, excuse me, August was the first we heard, um, from this group that is interested in the Lampasses color school. Um, it lost a little bit of steam, so we're wanting to bring this back up to you guys and get some direction on, on where we'd like to head with this project.
Hello, I'm Tasha Lewis. Nice to see you guys again. Um, basically, we wanted to come back here and just revive our strategic proposal that we provided back in August. Get any feedback, any answer, any questions that you guys might have had since you've had sometimes review. Um, we were really excited to try to get things moving, um, so we can start revitalizing everything and getting everything open to the community to enjoy and share. Um, so honestly, that was the main purpose of today, going to see if there's any more questions or what council had may or might need from us to move forward.
I just want to say, I think, I think what you're doing is great and I think this is a great educational opportunity. And I really appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you.
I don't know what steps we need to do to start moving forward on this, but, I mean, obviously, there's no motion or anything.
Not mine, right, um.
But I, I'd like to see what we could do moving forward to make this move.
Sure, so I just, um, mostly needed to know if there was a positive inclination from council to move this direction. If that is the case, then we will start the paperwork, um, to, we'll need a survey of the property so we can get that underway and then work on the deed paperwork and any agreement. Um, just so the council's aware, the state law is very specific in, in how municipalities can sell or transfer a property. And as long as property is being used for educational purposes, it allows us to grant the, that property to this organization. And there would just be a clawback in the documentation that should it ever cease to be used for public educational purposes, its ownership would return to the city and that's basically the state law. So, um, we'll certainly include that, but if, I think it's an exciting project.
And how close are you on your five oh one three, say, nonprofits?
Um, about two months ago, they had to go back, so now we're just waiting, um, for the final response on that. Um, they did let us know that there wasn't anything standing away. It was honestly with government shutdown and things slowing down everything quite a bit. So we're just waiting for that last paperwork, but we've got, um, everything else aligned in the LLC and everybody's ready to get to work and start raising money, um, so we can get started.
So you guys are gonna raise money to fund the project and, uh, okay.
Every single person in our, um, LLC and our, our board members, we have experience in events and promoting things and working with communities, um, processes, so we're ready. We've got other people, including citizens here in Lampasses that are excited. Um, they'd like to have events and help as well, so just ready to hear the go ahead.
And you're getting invited council members to your event?
Y'all are invited to the cookout.
I know you're cooking, that's why I'm asking.
Erin, I've got a few questions for you.
Yes.
I've heard it talked about that there were some other groups semi-interested or maybe a lot interested in the new home match application. Are we still talking about both properties being transferred to them?
So they are, they are interested in both properties? Um, the other group, I have not heard any further interest from that, so they, as far as I have withdrawn.
As far as the survey and title work goes, is the city on the boat for paying those expenses or is this nonprofit paying?
They, they have asked that the city pay for the survey, which we should have won anyway. Um, so they have asked that the city bear the hassle of the survey.
And if we don't have a survey, is there any way we can ask them to cover those costs? I mean, because we were just transferring land, so.
We can discuss that. Yeah, we can discuss that.
I've talked to a couple of families who are affected by this project potentially and they're really interested in being involved in this and being, having the children and grandchildren affected by it. Um, I think it's a huge step for our, for our town. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
So all of this can be done, like you guys can do, take care of all the paperwork. Is there anything that we're going to need to do? Like, do we need something on an agenda, future agenda?
Right, we're very busy as an action item, um, in January.
So also like the great project that's going on, is that going to interfere with, I mean, that sounds like it's probably not going to go all the way back that far. Um, and the church too, are y'all going to use it as a church or specifically what's written here as well?
Um, what's written there, but yes, we have talked about, uh, doing some church services. Um, another member of our board who's not here today, that's, um, his specialty as well. So we definitely talked about doing those types of events, even if it's monthly or quarterly to gain that interest. I know that was the main purpose, obviously, for that historical site beforehand and we want to bring that back, um, for everyone to enjoy.
And so if we bring it as a church, just since you said it needs to be educational, if, would that be part of like the educational aspect of it? Since it's like, it wouldn't be like becoming a, a, a national event church, I mean, by that, it would be part of that whole educational, like.
No. It will be.
First to this purple site, so I think the other, the other.
Right, yep, and just for the educational, history wise, but also learning and teaching centers for, um, the citizens of the surrounding areas, um, would be teaching in there. So the church services would be, I don't want to call it an event, but they would just be periodic. It wouldn't be an every Sunday thing. Um, it would still maintain education as its main job.
Part of that education, I read somewhere there was a music option too.
Yes, everything about music, um, gardening, um, history, but also computers, um, and just other educational areas where whether it's youth or, well, really anyone of any age here that might need help, um, doing different things, veterans, assistants, things like that, they're, we're planning on wanting to do all kinds of events.
And how we wanted to collectively do it instead of trying to, they're, make, make, help choose between the two organizations instead of partner.
So some of them wanting to go out and just ride, right? They didn't have to go through the organization first?
They would have to go, eh, this, and this is going to be up to council, I think at the end of the day, and, you know, uh, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. I will say on the CLRA aspect of it is, it is difficult. It is very difficult to keep up with the public because we were, we had the arena locked to keep the integrity of the arena. But the problem is, is that you, you go to lock it, say, they schedule at six o'clock in the evening. I'm up there at six o'clock or we just spent the entire, you know, a couple hours dragging water and making sure it's fresh for them and they don't show up till six thirty seven. Well, they still want their two, three hours that they did, so then I'm going back up at, you know, nine, ten o'clock at night to make sure everything's locked and lights are turned off and everything that. The public side isn't as, from what we saw on the CLRA side, it's not as utilized as what we thought. When, you know, I know that was council's biggest concern was the public, but when we keep track of it, it's, it's more time consuming and costly, um, to keep up with that because then you also have to see, okay, are these guys used, taking care of the parks correctly? Are they, you know, I caught people leaving their horses tied up to the arena and then some of them were off riding in the park. And that's the rules, they stay in their, in the arena. So doing it, the thought process is if we partner together, the riding club can handle that, um, aspect of it that if you want to utilize the arena, then you need to go through Dorton's group with the riding club, become a member there. So then that way we know, okay, this person was out there, now granted, there's cameras out there, but, you know, at, at one point, give up, give them, make sure that they're responsible and they'll help to take care of their trash, to pick up. And if they don't abide by those, then you don't get the use of it. And then that way we're keeping the integrity, we're not having past problems where, you know, people are riding horses in the soccer field or tearing things up. It's kind of what our, our goal is, just to keep the integrity of the property.
And we're waiting for a little bit to do any riding out there because of the, the horses and the, the problems that they're having around with the, the virus.
Yes, and there's been, I guess, a few more probably caught up, y'all are most caught up on that, on the H E H or E H P?
E H P.
Mm-hmm. You want to talk a little bit about what?
Sure.
Go.
Your question's just about if, if they're gonna be, no, not yet. Uh, we're gonna get updated. I mean, E H P is a pretty serious deal. I think it's, uh, on its way to being under control. Um, obviously, safety be number one, so we'll check on that. We wouldn't update until anything's ready. Um, do I have any questions? I have some points I wanted to make, but, uh, did your question get answered?
Yeah, I just, I mean, like, so like, be part of the riding club, do I have to pay a membership?
Correct.
I mean, to me, it's, it's public land. I want to go ride. It's a public arena. Why can't I go ride?
I don't want to be too direct or, or confrontational, but who pays to maintain for you being out there? Who, who maintains the arena, you know, if you're leaving trash, things like that. It's, that's one of the issues that we've run into in the past. I'm not saying we have a great answer for that. This was kind of our idea as a way to regulate that a little bit and, uh, kind of keep some accountability to the people that were out there. Um, I think, I'm not sure about the legality of this, but I think just because it is a Lampasses property that, I don't know that you're necessarily in public. I don't know that you're necessarily allowed to just be there free of charge. There's other, I think, public areas that do require some.
And to answer your question, technically, since the, originally in July, when we didn't renew our contract, um, the time, from the time that we did not renew our contract to now, when I, or a couple of weeks ago, when I approached, um, the, uh, Lupe about renting out, they have not been allowing anybody to utilize the arena. So no public use, now if you go out there, then, you know, kind of whatever, but you're, the proper channel was to go through the city. Um, and that's how I directed people when people asked me about riding out there is to reach out to the city. And Lupe had informed me that they weren't allowing anybody out there. And that's not how this contract situation came back out to speak because we, we couldn't even do a rodeo.
Well, I have a question for the riding club, because you said, on the riding club, you guys said that, that you have a membership. What is your, what are your membership fees, just out of curiosity?
Okay, just for a regular member that goes around the, uh, particular things, events and everything, it's fifty dollars. I did it before last night. It's got rules on it for arena use only. Sit and take a ride, but it's the same thing.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's just a fifteen dollar flat fee once.
For the members that, that does the event. If you're going to only use the arena, it's a question, a hundred and fifty dollars. If you go out there and rent arena and you mess up the arena, you're going to forfeit.
So why would, why would it be only fifty to join the club and a hundred and fifty only is the arena?
It's kind of a, kind of a perfect, the club, that you can go do the arena and utilize it, but they were already paid in.
Right, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. So if you, if you can make fifty dollars to join the club versus a hundred and fifty to rent the arena, why would you?
Well, it, it, it just works out that way. People do pay just for arena use. That's all they'll do is go out there and use arena to work their horses or, you know, just make the crane. Whereas with the membership, you can go out there and work your horses to help crane for the events that you're getting made to do.
Want your membership right now? I know, I know.
We lost membership from last year. We, we lost twelve people by July, um, by going to the arena. So East Lampasses Riding Club, that's why we want to get it back to Lampasses. We're hoping they will build a, uh, build the club back up because we're real close to the point of dissolution. Shut down, or we'll, we'll be gone.
So you guys starting out with ten, twenty?
We're probably going to have that, maybe twelve. Maybe, but hopefully come January, we have a membership, we get more people come in. And a lot of, a lot of people, they use, they use both clubs. They go sit takes and they do the L R C. Bringing new members in is hard. Uh, our junior rodeo, I talked to Tom Green last year regarding it. He said the junior rodeos are falling due to the fact that people, the young ones just now they just start getting into. I'm hoping my green, if I can say it's my green, eighteen and under, I want fifty of them. I don't care about, if the duck want to come ride, come ride, but I want fifty young ones. I want fifty kids to get out there and actually learn and participate and keep up with the, pardon the expression, western way of life. Any questions?
So the, the agreement with the city is going to be with the Best County Rodeo Association? And y'all are going to work it out and watch y'all's on how to split this.
I thought the agreement, I thought the agreement was to give the riding club, I thought that's our.
Well, what, what we talked about at our meeting was that they've got a little bit more pool, a little more equipment than the riding club has. We have no tractor, we're a cracker, and we can't carry the rain. You know, we got people that go out. You know, we got people that go out and can pick up trash, people leave behind. But uh, we don't leave a arena at a playdate or a high point, whatever you wanna call it, if there's crashes down. We make sure that everybody picks up around their crane and get out.
My main question here is, both groups are willing to work with each other, and y'all figure out a solution.
Which we did that last week, and I feel like we're pretty comfortable with our solution, even, like I said, having them help with our rodeo um, and being able to even, in other events that we do, donate a little money back to them so that they can build up something, and we get the volunteers that we need, because they have talked about making it, cause as their membership, they have a requirement, whether it's workdays or attending certain events or doing a certain thing, making it to where one of their requirements for their membership is help us with the, you know, with different events, or like the Riada, basically, cause that's the biggest event. So then that way they like, so we can, we can work together, because we all have the same en- end goal at the end of the day. And we both wanna use it, and so we kind of found a way to do it together, and each of us have a responsibility, but collectively take the same responsibility together and work it through.
Well, one thing I have a question, cause last year you said y'all lost money on the Riada. And then, I mean, and y'all had us give y'all ten thousand dollars in hot funds, but you didn't spend that in the advertising, which that's a whole other issue. And then y'all left us dry in July, so I'm just a little hesitant.
Understand, and you know, on that, on that part of that aspect, I didn't get to attend that meeting. We also had other expenses on there that weren't initially supposed to be ours, they were actually supposed to be the barbecue cookoff um, aspect of it, there were things, cause we were already getting stuff, and we were supposed to split some costs, and it didn't, it didn't happen. And so that's where a lot of our um things had occurred on that as, on the um marketing side, cause originally it was gonna be different things, and then barbecue kinda did its own thing, and it it went, it went completely logical to what we anticipated, basically. We found, I already looked through our P N Ls, I've gone through it with the stock contract, and we looked at different ways that we can um, move different things, and even some of the things that we did to make it easier, um, some of the aspects weren't, it was a little bit more than what we thought was going to be, so it was a little shell shocking when we originally approached um, on that aspect of things, so, and you know, that was our, you know, one of the highest paying rodeos in around, we were, that's how we kind of put Lampasses on the map, and why everyone's been reaching back out to us. And so I've been coming through on different ways to do that, because I totally anticipate, how highly doubt, knowing that, I already had the mind, the mentality that I couldn't come back and ask for that again, because for one, I know y'all's budget was tight, looking at it in the last meeting, and so it was gonna, I was gonna have to figure out what um, what to do different on sponsorship wise, start earlier, but the problem is now is, we're in December, our rodeo is usually in April, and now we don't, we don't have a place to go. So I don't know, you know, we're gonna have to be scranking up for um sponsorship, so there's a different way, we're gonna have to approach it this year based on we, I know we we can't come back and ask for ten thousand.
No, I mean, y'all shouldn't have got your ten thousand last time, but you didn't spend the money on, it's supposed to.
That's a, that's a reminder, there's a lot of agency tax can be used on both marketing and the expenditures associated with this work event, which rodeo is. And that was what they approached us on, and I applied for that.
No, because neither one of y'all know what y'all are talking about.
If, if I may, uh, first of all, let me back up, mayor and council, this is my first trip here. So, um, a little bit new to this deal, let me just tell you, my name is Heston, and my wife and I own AgroTech. We're an ag service business here in town. Uh, we got involved last year, um, just cause we appreciate the western lifestyle, we think it, we think the city and the community would benefit from the rodeo and the events and the youth events that this arena could provide, there's potential there, and we see that, we wanna foster that, and we want, that's what we got involved with the County Lampasses Rodeo Station for, um, in the first place. We title sponsored the rodeo last year, um, and we want to volunteer for this, we wanna bring some energy to this, and we've got resources and the willingness to add some value to this. Um, for me personally, I would like to see some support from the city and know that this is something that the city values. And uh, I would, I think it would be great if we could partner on this, we've already worked it out, and we can partner with them. We think working with everybody would be the best way to do this, to get everybody on the same page.
When you say support, uh, what, tell me about that one.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and I don't, I don't want that to go the wrong way. Um, we just wanna know that if if we spend a lot of time and effort and and some money, that we would have some long-term, um, call it insurance for that, so that the next year we can continue and we can build a reputation with this rodeo, which is kind of our main, main event there. But also that we, i- if we foster some youth rodeos, youth events, that we'll be able to re-lease the arena from year to year, and that basically the time and effort that we'll put in this year, be able to roll over for the future years. I think that's what I mean by that, as far as support.
Y'all figure out how to work both groups together, and I don't get four phone calls a day that.
We already have, and and to go back to his question, just the, the dealing with those phone calls and getting arena prep and putting the work into that, I don't know it's a touchy thing, but.
Yeah, I can put it in the statement, we, we got some in full in town, we gotta pay you, so.
Great example, thank you, thank you for, that's actually a really good, now, so we just want a little support for being able to, if the people wanna use it, we'd like to just get a little support back from them, so we can put diesel in the tractor and spend a little bit of time to maintain that arena. We spray the area, uh, my company, we do a lot of herbicide work, and so, you know, the maintenance will be very easy for us. Uh, we're happy to do that and donate all that to the city for for keeping the grounds.
I think the time is right to discuss the 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 contract that you're talking about, and talk about what the city involvement is, and what our role is, and it's the right time to talk about youth, talk about involvement, for things that can be attracted to other people in the city, bring people to the city. I'd like it to see us go ahead and um talk about it more in depth.
Love to, yeah, I I think, I don't know for sure, if there's a motion, I'm not much on parliamentary, but we would like to get a contract, I mean, through the County Lampasses Rodeo Association, I mean, that's, I think, what our goal is ultimately, so that we can move forward with this.
I'm down for this, like I said, I love everything, but y'all working together, I wanna see that contract, what's all written up, ready to go, and then.
Yep.
And my, and my understanding too, and when I spoke to Aaron, too, I think the, on the city standpoint, it may have to be one, one actual entity, and then between the two of us, we will then, you know, create our own, own contract between the two on how we're gonna work that out. But the problem that we lie here is that we gotta figure something out sooner than later, because our, we have a rodeo in April, and they start your playdates when?
In March.
In in March, so we're kind of all on a little bit of a, of a rocky slope, yeah, trying to figure out what we're gonna do um timeframe wise.
Have you guys, you guys sent a form to board us as of yet?
I think we do, the County Lampasses Rodeo Association does have a board.
Okay, and so both, both entities would be on that board, and, okay.
Yeah.
I think it would be great for y'all, that you entities, if you like, would get your contracts up together between the two of y'all, and when this comes up in January, that we present it to council, uh, and then we can discuss the contract with whatever organization is gonna be the primary. And we have a couple of the contract between the two organizations, so that the city knows who's gonna do what, who's responsible for what, and then we have the primary contract with the city.
Which, and we, the one that J C did, even the one that, um, and you know, I know some of y'all are new, so y'all may have not seen it, but even I wouldn't think we could have to do too much on that, I would say use the same contract as what we had, um, cause I think that works fairly well, but that's just my two cents on it. I know some of y'all will need to review that, because y'all weren't on council at that time, but we do have one that we did have originally.
Okay, we'll, miss Paul, we can review that contract.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll review it and have it ready for the council in January. Uh, I did tell, when Lex was approaching last week, and said that they were willing to work together, and they were both joining the project, I did encourage one of them to be the primary, M D to contract with, and then they can work out the details between themselves, it's just easier for us to have the contract in place.
I think that's the way I'd like to see it.
And and we discussed that a little bit, and and we think County Lampasses Rodeo Association will be primary contract, and then we'll work out first.
All right.
Thank y'all for your time.
I'd just like to add one deal, one about the hot funding, and I don't have a dog in this hot right here, but we did adhere to every legal aspect of the spending of that hot funding, you're dead wrong. And now I think it's, it's unfair for y'all as a council that oversees the hotel tax, that's not taxpayer money, to say up here that you wouldn't give it for an event to be held in Lampasses, be it a rodeo or anything else. I think that's pretty unfair of y'all to do. And I'd love to hear what you'd have to say.
Well, I just disagree with you, and I'm just gonna have.
On what, on state law?
No, not on state law, but.
Well, you just sat up here and said, we illegally spent that money, did you not?
No, that's not what I said.
That we should have never got it, because it wasn't spent for advertising, so do you think hot funding is only used for advertising?
No, sir. What we have traditionally done is gone through, and she showed the expenses, and we've matched the expenses.
Who?
With, when we have the Chamber present events.
This wasn't a chamber event.
No, it wasn't a, well, it was a joint event with the Chamber, I don't think that's barbecue, but I'll call it that. But I just, I feel like if you, because when it was originally stated, that was like this is what we're gonna spend it on, and that's what.
We were very upfront on what we said we're gonna spend it on, and part of that was for the contractor, because of how much the contractor cost to do it. A hundred percent, we sat up here and said that. So there was no surprise of what money was spent for.
But this isn't really what is on this agenda, so I think we can maybe have a discussion.
I just think you should, you should watch your public statement when you're wrong.
All righty, well. Discussion regarding any item up included on the regular session for December eighth, twenty twenty five, for consideration on future agendas?
I'd like to bring one thing up real quick, just introduce the subject. One of the issues that came up at the T M L conference was a very interesting idea to have citizens from our city. And I'd like to pursue that and then bring more detail to the council in the future month, month or two. And that would be to encourage more participation by the general public in our city, also to have a formal training program, uh, education program to, to be involved in civic leadership and community involvement in our city. So I would, just want to give you a heads up, that's what I'm going to bring up and uh try to pursue in the next couple of months.
That would be an item, those who made it for workshop.
Yes, sir.
Talking about it, okay.
Thank you. And if you have any, any thoughts, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Let's take a ballot, five, seven minutes, break, we'll come back, adjourn. All right, at this time, we will call the regular sessions order, chief, all right.
That is right. Dear heavenly Father, we're just grateful to be here tonight in this great community. We're thankful for the festivities that precede this celebration of your son Jesus. We ask that you be with us as those continue, we ask that you be with us in that spirit tonight in this meeting. We ask that we have some good information, make some good decisions for the betterment of your entire community, which is what it's all about. We ask that you forgive us for our sins, watch your words in safety till we can meet again, as in always, in your name and in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I'd be able to join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with the vision of justice for all. On the protect the flag, on pledge allegiance to the test, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Citizens comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on not included on the agenda, they do so at this time, and we don't have any more. Citizen who does desire to address the city council, on the matter of that is included on the agenda, maybe we sort this out, and we have none. One point three, public hearing to receive citizen's comments regarding the request of rezoned property described as one point nine acres, fifteen fourteen East Avenue A, Lampasses, Texas, Lampasses County, from single-family residential S F six to single-family residential six, S F six, with a mobile home overlay, M H O.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, property owner Juan Mota is requesting a mobile home overlay for his property that he owns at fifteen fourteen East Avenue A. The entire area is characterized as residential with single-family homes and single-family homes with a mobile home overlay. All notifications and publications as required by ordinance and statute have been made. Staff mailed nine notices to property owners and received seven letters in favor and none in opposition. This was heard by the planning commission on December fourth, and it was voted through with a seven zero vote.
Any questions? Nope. Public hearing to receive citizen's comment regarding a request of rezoned property from retail R to retail R with planned development P D overlay. The property is described as lots four, seven, eight, nine, ten, lot twelve of the L S C second edition, lot seven and eight, lot thirteen of the L S C second edition, lot one of the hundred and eighty-third South Business Plaza, and lot one, block one of the Finney Commercial Edition, Lampasses, Texas, Lampasses County.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I mean, you know that's a mouthful, there's not currently a nine-one-one address associated with it, so it is a lot of lots, but that is the legal description. Uh, property owner Gerald Finney is asking to consider approval, denial, or approval with modifications, or request to put a planned development overlay over the lots that he has to bring in a hotel. Uh, the entire area is characterized as retail, and the property is surrounded by single-family homes and hotel properties. All notifications and publications as required by ordinance and statute have been made. Staff mailed twenty-one notices to property owners and received five letters in favor and none in opposition. This was heard the planning commission on December fourth and was passed with a seven zero vote. There is a photo on your screen, if you'll look at it, um, this is kind of an outline of what this should look like. Um, right in front of that parking lot is bushes, to give you a little bit of some area. Uh, so this property will essentially surround bushes. And then you are passing around my phone, it does have a plan set of what that hotel is supposed to look like. Uh, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to help, and Gerald's here as well.
Do we have at this point in time, how many parking spaces that are planned, or is that not part of this?
Hasn't gone through plan review as of yet, so I'm not sure that there would be a total.
I wanna say there's a hundred and nineteen spaces marked on the plans, and I think the, what's required by local ordinances will be under a hundred, and there'll also be a, a joint parking agreement with bushes, I mean, but I'll sign it myself, so. I'll add another thirty spaces if we need it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Two point oh, concerning this agenda, discussion of possible action regarding approval amendments of the regular meeting held on November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Two point two, discussion of possible action regarding a second reading of ordinance, amending the Lampasses code ordinance regarding the request for rezoned property from single-family residential twenty to S F twenty, commercial to commercial C, the property is described as part of lot four, block one of the Gilford Edition, commonly known as five hundred North Willis. of the Gilford Edition, commonly known as five hundred North Willis Street, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County. Two point three, discussion of possible action regarding purchases and charges in excess of four thousand dollars for October and November twenty twenty five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we pull out two point two, which would be the second ordinance we use.
And I'm gonna extend two point one, do we need to pull that out?
So... We will vote on two point one. All in favor?
I, I see, I, I moved that we approved the minutes because there were no, I didn't see anything. That was, you know, appropriate.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
All right, we'll need a motion.
I move to approve two point two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
And I move to approve two point two.
I second.
I've got a question on that. First, here, what, what are we paying for the forty-eight ninety-seven dollar?
For hallbreaks. Water department, correct?
Somebody asked, yeah. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, knocked it up, lost my mind. Three point O, boards and park reports.
Mayor and Council, in the fact that you'll find the city manager's operational report, at our last meeting, I failed to introduce some of our new, not necessarily new hires, but new promotions to you. So Stephen Sewell is Public Works Director. Jesse Costa has been promoted to our Parks and Rec Director. He's got a couple of new hires with him or promotions, actually. Josh Flosio has promoted to the cemetery crew lead position. And Steven Alton has promoted to the parks superintendent position. So we'll now be looking to fill the sports facilities currently. And additionally, Wayne is here, he is retiring in January, so I think he's just here for fun tonight. Um, Mike has been filling in in that role, but we'll have interviews to fill Wayne's position tomorrow. Uh, we're also going to be interviewing for assistant fire chief on December seventeenth. Chief Davis has constructed an assistance center that, I believe we have six candidates that will be interviewing for that. And also we'll have assistant fire chief hired soon. And I think Chief Cummings has a new officer hired, so back to fullish. Uh, we have placed a freeze on the code enforcement position, pending some more conversations with council about what we want that to look like moving forward. Because it's currently structured to be in the police department. Uh, but Officer English has gone back to working regular patrol rather than code enforcement. So we may be looking to fill that code enforcement position at the police department, we just haven't posted that position yet. The Hostess House project continues with ADA parking upgrades starting last week. Last Monday, we held our first event, which was the annual water department toy drive, held a conjunction with the police department and fire department. We anticipate that the parking lot will be complete mid-January and the facility will be able to rent out in February. We're already getting interest in that facility, so that's exciting. And we'll plan on bringing rental rates to council for discussion in January. So we're gonna have a very specific discussion about Hostess House rental rates. I do feel the need to tell you that, um, the elevator sub-function at the toy drive on the first, uh, upon further inspection, it was found that there is not enough electrical pole to the building to power the elevator and just about anything else at the same time. So we have reached out to the architect and the contractor to find out, um, how that was missed or not addressed. They were going to be jumping on a causing, they did an electrical study before the elevator was installed. So we don't know where the disconnect is currently or what exactly needs to be done to fix that. But it will be addressed prior to the facility opening to the public. Um, and for our meter changeout program, Stephen might be able to speak a little bit more to this, but core main began on our budgeted water meter changeout program in mid-November, replacing end-of-life meters throughout the city, so we can anticipate. And we think that will tighten up our revenue stream, give us better readings on our water meter. We replaced over two hundred, over two hundred water meters that were at end-of-life. So we're excited to get that project wrapped up and I think the utility rolls are ready for that to be done as well. Do y'all have any questions, sir?
I just had a few comments and I just wanted to wish everybody, our city and our community, uh, city employees, a Merry Christmas this year. It's, uh, feels like it's been an awful long year. We're nearing to the end of another year. And, uh, we just, uh, just keep trusting our Lord and Savior that he's gonna be with us and take care of everybody. And, uh, just, uh, we've got a lot of great things in our community. Coming, we had a phenomenal, I thought it was great parade on this last Saturday night. I'll thank the chief, we didn't have any, any issues at all. You get that many people, you get it. Almost think we can get, have, have a few issues there. I see Robert back there, he's, he's been totally committed to our airport and, and, uh, you know, I just, and our electrical department, you guys there to keep all those lights burning. Vision Landpasses, done a great job with our Christmas on the creek. Gotta be going, I'm already going now. And, uh, I think there's some events out there this weekend. This, this, this coming Saturday, so, uh, just wanted to remind everybody about that. Just, uh, you know, we're just so blessed to live in this, this community and, uh, and just wanted to say from our council to the, to the city and to our staff, thank you and God bless and Merry Christmas. All that being said, uh, upcoming special events, meetings, uh, December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, city offices will be closing at twelve o'clock. Uh, and December twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, the city offices will be closed for Christmas. Four point one, discussion of possible action regarding canceling the regular city council meeting on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do typically cancel the second meeting in December. This month, we have, we have asked to have a second meeting, but move it up to the fifteenth. So we're asking to cancel the meeting on the twenty-second and reschedule for the fifteenth.
They typically have short meetings with no shutdown.
I have kept it as short as I humanly can possibly do it.
Next, next month they...
Correct.
So, uh, is there any way to get gender wired here so we can have our annual meeting with them?
I can reach out to them and see if they're, if they're able to get it here.
But we wouldn't have the other attorney, you wouldn't be there.
The attorney won't be available for that, I wouldn't imagine. I'll, I'll have to verify with her tomorrow, it's possible that she couldn't.
But we wouldn't be able to have, we wouldn't be able to have the, y'all, like, with the timeline and the actual...
I do see, like, God's number, how many of us to have the meeting for this year?
Have an annual minutes where compliant, we, meeting with an annual, to put a kickback on them to cancel.
We'll get it fixed.
All right.
Say, clear your throat. Make a motion to move the December twenty-second meeting to December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point two, discussion of possible action regarding perjury and ordinance amending Phoenix A of the City Code, schedule concerning fees for chapter two administration, article eight, fire apartment facility use, chapter fourteen aviation, chapter eighteen building and building regulations, chapter fifty-four parks and recreation, chapter eighty-two utilities, all of which are further detailed in exhibit A, this ordinance providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing a severability clause and providing effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was put on a workshop session a few months ago. Uh, I made the recommended changes to pull out the spectator fee in funds. I've removed that and under the building, uh, building and permitting, I have modified the reinspection fee to be after the third failed inspection.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, fee schedule.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of ordinance amending Landpasses code ordinances regarding the request for rezoned property described as one point seven nine acres, fifteen fourteen East Avenue A, Landpasses, Texas, County, from single-family to residential six SF six to single-family residential six SF six with a mobile home overlay, MHO.
Mayor and Council, this is the ordinance that follows with the public hearing that we had earlier this evening for property owner Mr. Mota.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance amending Landpasses code of ordinances regarding a request to rezon property described as one point seven nine acres, fifteen fourteen East Avenue A, Landpasses, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, from single-family residential six SF six to single-family residential six SF six with a mobile home overlay, MHO.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amending the Landpasses code of ordinance regarding, uh, request to rezon property from retail R to retail R with plan development PD overlay. The property is described as lots four, seven, eight, nine, ten, lot twelve of the LSC second edition, lot seven and eight, lot thirteen of the LSC second edition, lot one of the one eighty-three South Business Plaza and lot one, block one of the Finney Commercial Edition, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and Council, this is the ordinance that goes with the second public hearing we have tonight for the plan development overlay for the hotel going in back from the east.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance amending the Landpasses code of ordinance regarding the request for rezon property from retail R to retail R with a plan development PD overlay. The property is described as lots four, seven, eight, nine, ten, lot twelve of the LST second edition, lot seven and eight, lot thirteen of the LST second edition, lot one of the one eighty-three Business Plaza, lot N, lot one, block one of the Finney Commercial Edition, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point five, discussion of possible action renewing contract, full station inspection, maintenance of testing with LCRA.
Mayor and Council, this is the renewal of a five-year agreement that we have with LCRA for certain testing of our, of substations. It's a pass-through on our monthly utility bills through LCRA. It is, um, the continuation of an agreement that we've been under for at least the last five years. That expires in December of this year, and so they're looking to renew that for another five years. We have sufficient funds budgeted, um, to pay for the service, it's, it's certainly beneficial to the electric firm.
I move to approve that, two point five. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action approving a resolution to appoint a new plan coordinator for Mission Square Retirement.
Mayor and Council, the, this item and the next item have to do with allowing access to certain personnel to, um, different items. This one being the Mission Square Retirement Plan, which is an optional add-on for our employees. And currently, Ms. Moreno, Stacy Brack, I think is still on there as a point of contact. And so this is just cleaning up some of those staff contacts for, um, some of our options for employees.
I move to approve a resolution appointing Erin Harrison as plan coordinator for the Mission Square Retirement.
Second.
Any discussion?
What exactly is this here?
It's an optional retirement contribution outside of TMRs.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point seven, discussion of possible action amending a resolution for the city of Landpasses for participating in TechStar.
Again, this is allowing staff access to one of our investment tools in TechStar. Some of our funds are invested there, I cannot currently get a login without y'all's authorization.
I move to approve a resolution appointing Erin Harrison as authorized representative for TechStar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point eight, discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amending the Landpasses code of ordinance regarding mobile food vendor unit of hours operation, section twenty-two dash three, twenty-two of the Landpasses code of ordinance concerning the allowed hours of operation for mobile food vendor unit providing severability clause and providing effective date.
Mayor and Council, staff received a request from a local breakfast food truck to, uh, change the hours of operation from seven AM to six AM. In doing so, we granted them temporary access to do so, but we would have to formally adopt an ordinance to do that. This is the ordinance.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance amending the Landpasses code of ordinance regarding mobile food vendor unit hours of operation, section twenty-two dash three, two, two of the Landpasses code of ordinance concerning the allowed hours of operation for mobile vendor units providing a severability clause and right and effective date. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action regarding the city of Landpasses for participating in Central Texas Water Alliance for an annual membership fee of five thousand dollars. Authorizing the city manager to execute all documents related to membership.
Mayor and Council, the Central Texas Water Alliance is a product of this year's legislative session, um, that creates this group to be a voice for Central Texas concerning, um, our water futures. The county of Landpasses, uh, recently joined or voted to join the Water Alliance. We think it's important for the city to have a seat at that table as well. Um, I think last I heard, they had not completely approved the membership fee, but they were thinking it was gonna be that five thousand dollars, that is what the county approved to pay. So we do have su- sufficient funds budgeted for membership. And so we would ask for council's consideration to allow us to join that water alliance.
I think this is a good organization to keep in touch with, anything that we can do to make sure our water systems are available and open to our public uses of stepping in the right direction.
I move to approve the city's membership in the Central Texas Water Alliance, approving a five thousand dollar membership fee and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents related to membership.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of amendments to the Landpasses Economic Development Corporation by laws as approved by the LAIC board on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and Council, the economic development preparation met on Wednesday, July twenty-third. Yes, that's not a typo. Uh, they recommended a revision to their bylaws to change the number of directors who are not employees of the city, officers or members of, uh, city council from three to four. They recommended, uh, limiting the term limit to consist of two consecutive two-year terms and an attendance requirement of at least seventy-five percent of meetings in one calendar year. and an attendance requirement of at least seventy-five percent of meetings in one calendar year. They did adopt this on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, so it comes to you after.
Make a motion to accept the amended LEED bylaws as per second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point eleven, discussion of possible action regarding sixty-three month lease of a new printer property for the library from Visual Edge IT in the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents per month.
Mayor and council, the library has recently experienced some issues with their, um, copying machine. They are paying below three hundred a month for their monthly lease costs, but they're experiencing overages in the copies that were allowed during the lease agreement. I mean, it was signed five years ago. So they are, um, looking at a different unit that will be about three hundred and eighty-nine ninety-four a month. It's a slight overage for what was budgeted in their equipment line item. But at about six hundred and fifty dollars, they can find that money in another line item that transfer that over to cover that overage. This includes a higher number of, uh, uh, higher allowance for copies per month. So they won't experience these overages that they are currently.
I move to approve the sixty-three month lease of the Xerox AltenLink C eight two four five from Visual Edge IT for possibly three hundred and eighty-nine ninety-four a month. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That will go to our website photo contest. Consider it a selection of the winner. Get a nomination.
Motion, uh, Andrew Roger.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's the majority. Discussion of possible action regarding the approval of bid from Blue Bonnet in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents for a twenty-twenty-six F two fifty to replace a twenty-twelve Chevrolet three-quarter ton utility pickup for the electric department.
Mayor and council, this item was on the last agenda for the last council meeting, rather. Uh, council member Gold recognized that one of the, uh, one of the bids was actually the one-ton versus the three-quarter. We had all bids reviewed and selected, uh, the, the best three-quarter ton for staff. The Hoff Power bid that was originally a one-ton is now a three-quarter ton in the bid packet.
I also noticed on the Hoff Power bid, you put a bed on there.
The other two have a bed as well. Uh, however, Hoff, Hoff Power just listed it, I, I might say separately. The other two bids, the, the beds are, it's already cleared. The Hoff Power would be an addition after the fact. Staff chose to go with the Blue Bonnet bid because it's got the fastest lead time. The Hoff Power bid, uh, will be three or four, three or four months versus the Blue Bonnet is on the ground, ready to go now. And this is a truck that staff is in need of currently. The truck that they have is on its last life.
I make a motion to approve the bid of sixty-three five seven point seven five hundred one for the purchase of twenty-twenty-six Ford F two fifty and authorize the city manager to the Texas Department of Labor. Second.
I swear to God, I indulge you for just to say, I, I didn't, I didn't inform you, but Forward Landpasses is doing an appreciation for the city employees on December the nineteenth. Between eleven and two o'clock, it's going to be held at the fire station. Uh, I think the city manager, we've agreed that she's going to allow one-third of the city employees to come in at times so they can all be fed. It's all our dollars, so they'll be allowed to come and go as they please over a three-hour period. And it's just appreciation for all the city employees.
Is it chicken?
You're invited. Uh, I'm not going to say there's no chicken there, this won't be fine. It's going to be a taco lunch and, uh, so city council, everyone's invited.
Thank you, guys.
I apologize for not bringing that up.
And, uh, we made a vote on, uh, four thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
That made a motion to adjourn it to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Section five five one oh seven one, consultation, consultation. With the attorney of the city, you see, advise the legal council of the city concerning pending complacation, litigation, settlement, offer or any other matter. It's the duty of the legal council to the city council to advise the city government body regarding such matters pursuant to the state law statutes include the Texas Departmentary Rules, Professional Compact of State Law of Texas and Compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Five point two, section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties and or discipline of a public officer or employee, city manager and other personnel matters that allow by Texas Government Code, chapter five five one. Five point three, section five five one point oh eight six, related, relating to the authority of the public powers utility government body to deliberate regarding competitive matters, uh, utilities. And we will adjourn it to executive session.
Are you talking about that? Yeah, I did the same thing. Are you voting?
Oh, thank you, Julie.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn that?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, nothing coming out of executive session tonight, so we get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?